In commission, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Scales. Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here and Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And while you're standing, anyone who is going to testify before this commission tonight needs to be sworn in. So please raise your right hand and swear that any testimony you give will be the whole truth so help you God. Thank you. I'm assuming that people in the overflow room heard this.
They should.
And, okay, economic development director tells us they complied. I remind everyone to please silence all your electronic devices. Also, that anyone who testifies must sign in before the commission with the contact information in their names, sign in sheets in the hall, overflow room, and at the podium. Next item is approval of the minutes of the February 9th, 2022 regular meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second, Thomas.
Motion is second. Discussion of the item. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Sharp.
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. And before we start, we always review the public hearing procedures. The way we run the meetings first, we introduce the applicant and their petition. The petitioner then presents that, followed by staff comments, and then the public gets a chance to weigh in with their questions and comments. Petitioner, of course, can respond to those. We also have our village attorney, Mr. Zemanak, here to keep us straight on the, any legal questions that arise, and procedural, of course. And finally, the commissioners get to weigh in with their questions and comments, and finally, a vote. And I think you're all aware that this commission is a recommending body. The village board has the final say-so. We send our recommendation to the board. Staff would notify petitioner when they would appear before the board. And the board may or may not take our recommendation, whatever it is, but that's the way we do it. Under new business, PZC 0042022, a request from BHDP Architecture and Fifth Third Bank, N.A., regarding the property located at 910 Pasquenelli Drive in Westmont for the following. A, zoning code variance request to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls. B, zone code variance request to permit outdoor lighting in excess of illumination standards. And C, site and landscaping plan approval. Who would represent Third, Fifth Bank tonight? Good evening.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Lenny Osoro. I'm a partner, I'm an attorney at the law firm of Feigery, Drinker, Biddle and Reef, located at 3, we just moved, sorry, 320 South Canal, Suite 3300, Chicago, Illinois 60606. We represent the applicant, Fifth Third Bank. Also in attendance is, on behalf of the applicant, is Patricia McClellan, Vice President and Project Leader, Randall Morrissey, Vice President and Real Estate Manager for Fifth Third Bank, Chris Keppner, PE from Erickson Engineering Associates, Stephen Corcoran, PE, PTOE, Erickson Engineering Associates, Samantha Kelly, Lead AP, NCI, DQ from BHDP Architecture, Jeremy McDole, Project Manager and Senior Project Manager from CBRE, Global Workplace Solutions, as well as Mary Lindberger, MAI, Appraiser from Lindberger and Company, LLC. They contributed to and produced the exhibits that have been tendered to you that are marked Exhibits A through AA, and they will be available to answer any questions that the commission may have after the presentation. As your chair, Mr. Chair, it indicated the applicant seeks the commission's favorable recommendation of an application for two variations. One is for a reduction in the minimum parking requirement, and the other has to do with the parking lot lighting design, as well as the site plan approval. I will deliver a short presentation and summarize the proposed findings of fact. And during one of the slides with regards to the photometrics, I'm actually going to turn it over to our team member, Chris Keppner, who will briefly address the photometric plan and explain dark sky compliant lighting. And following Mr. Keppner, the representatives and consultants will be available to answer any questions. So with that, turning to the first slide, this is the zoning map of the subject property. It is in the OR Office Research District. The intended use is a bank operations center for Fifth Third Bank. It is not a customer-facing or retail use. It is an internal bank operations facility that will be used and occupied by Fifth Third Bank employees and certain deliveries from customers that do business with the bank, but it's not a customer-facing retail bank branch. The intended use is bank operations, which qualifies as a business and professional office, and such use is permitted in the Office Research District. The next slide is a survey of the subject property. The site, as Chairperson Carmichael indicated, is on Pasquenelli. It is on the west side of the street. The site size is 155,000 square feet, give or take, which is 3.57 acres. The existing building is 35,939 square feet. It's a single-story building, and there is onsite parking, which consists of 125 spaces. This next exhibit is an aerial view of the subject property. And as you can see on this particular exhibit, it situates the building in the middle. The building was built in the mid-1980s. There's onsite parking on the north, on the west, as well as in the front of the building. There are two entrances from Pasquenelli Drive, one on the north, one on the south. Fifth Third Bank purchased the property in July of 2021. The prior owner of this property used the property for commercial industrial office. The required parking for the subject property, based on the zoning ordinance, is calculated based on the square footage. And based on that calculation, the required minimum parking is 134 spaces. However, existing, there are only 125 onsite spaces, and that was the condition for the prior owner, and it's still the condition right now. The next slide is the subject property from the vantage point of the north elevation and the east elevation. So as you can see with the north elevation, there's a view of the south of the building. South of the building, there is a detention area, detention pond. And then from the view, you can see the onsite parking of the subject property to the west. Also, north of the building is 777 Oakmont Lane. As you can see, there's onsite parking for that property, which has a similar office building use. There's parking lot lighting for that property that runs along the western edge, just abutting the trees. As you can see, the 777 Oakmont Lane property has a similar configuration as the subject property. And then the slide on the right, the east elevation, shows the south of the building. Again, there's a detention area immediately south of the building. Southwest of the building, there is a residential zoning district. And then also, west of the building, there is a detention area, and then the school. Then going to the next slide, this is a view on the left of the south elevation. Again, you can see the detention area that is immediately south of the subject property. And then immediately south of that, there's another office building. And then the west elevation, looking east, you then see the subject property. The detention area is in your near view, and then there's the cluster of dense trees, and then the parking lot for the subject property. As you can see, the building is almost square, and then there's the smaller portion of the building that is on the south side. And then to the east of that is another office building. This particular aerial just gives a little bit more context of the subject property and adjacent properties with your north property, your east office building, the detention, as well as the office building to the south, as well as the detention pond to the west. And what we tried to just depict here was just the general proximity of the different uses, in particular, the properties to the west and to the southwest. This next slide is the architectural plan. So why are we here today? What does Fifth Third Bank wish to do? Well, Fifth Third Bank seeks to use this property as its bank operations center. In order to do so, it needs to add an 833-square-foot addition to the little, looks like a backwards L, portion of the building, right here, and I'm going to move the mouse a little bit, to add on to the building. In addition, a portion of the onsite parking, in particular, to the west and to the north, is going to be slightly reconfigured. And there's going to be a pedestrian crosswalk for safety purposes on the north side of the building. In addition, there will be lighting that will be installed, that Mr. Keppner will talk about, that's going to be located along the rear parking lot, similar to, in terms of the lighting itself, similar to the north property, but technically a little bit different, as Mr. Keppner will explain, in order to provide lighting for the parking, as well as security for the operation of the particular building. There will also be, in the back of the building, an onsite emergency electric backup generator. The backup generator is exempt from the noise standards of the zoning ordinance because of its temporary routine usage. So it's not a permanent, ongoing use, as such, it is exempt. Notwithstanding the fact that it is exempt, we have provided as part of our exhibits documentation, the specifications that demonstrate that the noise that would be emitted during its non-routine use is below the maximum threshold standards, according to your noise ordinance. The next slide is the photometric site plan, and as I promised, I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Keppner for this particular slide.
Thanks, Lenny. My name is Chris Keppner with Erickson Engineering. I'm going to, just very briefly, one of the improvements that we are proposing to the site is an upgrade to the site lighting. Under the current conditions, there's a handful of fixtures at the rear that are either mounted to the building or onto poles that, you know, are angled upward and outward, kind of like spotlights. Those really weren't going to provide the adequate levels of lighting that the owner wants for the, you know, for the safe function of this property and the employees that are using it. So, really, we're just, we had proposed an upgrade to that site lighting plan to meet, you know, a little bit higher level of lighting throughout the parking lot. Those fixtures are dark sky compliant. You know, our understanding, just in talking with staff, was that that was a kind of a design standard that the village was interested in pursuing. What it means for this site simply is, you know, these fixtures no longer act like spotlights and are angled upwards, but they are all positioned straight down and cast light downward, perpendicular to the ground, as opposed to, you know, upwards and outwards. Due to the location of the existing pavement and the edges of the parking lots, these poles are located within fairly close proximity to the property line. We've put in shielding to eliminate as much light spilling behind the pole and onto the property line, but there's still some instances where there's minor light levels that spill across the property line, which is why we're here to ask for that variance.
The next slide is the proposed landscape plan, which has been reviewed, and we have received comments from the village and its engineers regarding the landscape plan. And then finally, are the standards. So since we are applying for variation, two variations, and one site plan approval, this particular slide identifies the standards for both, according to your zoning ordinance. With respect to the standards, we have tendered Exhibits A through AA, which we would respectfully ask the chair to admit into the record of these proceedings as support. With regard to the variations, I'm just going to summarize our proposed findings of fact based on the evidence contained in those documents. As you will see when I go through this variation, some of the standards have some overlap. So what I'm going to do, to save the commission some time to move through it, I'm just going to identify which of those standards have some overlap and commonality, and thus have the same backup information, and that'll help us get through it, I think, a little bit more efficiently. So with regards to the variation, standard number one and standard number six are primarily similar. And so with regard to that particular standard, in support of it, the applicant owns a subject property and seeks to use it for its bank operations center. It will not be using the subject property to derive any kind of rental income out of the real estate. So this particular use and development is not intended to be a revenue, or real estate revenue generating income for the property owner. The property owner intends to actually use it. So potentially, this particular criteria would not be applicable, but to the extent that it is, the property cannot be used by Fifth Third Bank for its intended use under the parking and lighting requirements without the variation. With respect to standard number two, standard number two has overlap with standard number seven, which is the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. In support of this standard, the applicant's intended use as a bank operations center is a relatively unique use. As I indicated before, this is not a retail, customer-facing facility. This is internal operations. I forgot to mention, there will be approximately 80 maximum employees at this particular facility during operations, and there will be, the shifts are during the week, and that other times is indicated in our traffic memo report. So the intended use is, it could be more analogous in your zoning code to an employment-based commercial use. And if that particular parking standard applied to this particular property with 80 maximum employees, which would result in a minimum of 40 parking spaces. We recognize that's not the standard, but given the low number of employees that are going to be on this site, the utilization of the parking is going to be pretty minimal. So in this particular instance, we are requesting a variation. The variation would result in 116 spaces, which is substantially more than what would be required under the employment classification that I indicated. The proposed number of spaces at 116 is actually 87% of the minimum required under the zoning code. So because of the relative unique intended use, the type of lighting in the rear parking lot, similar to the adjacent property, again, just in terms of the location of it, at 777 Oakmont Lane, is necessary for safe and secure operations, and Mr. Keppner talked about the dark sky compliance. So that's standards two and seven. Standard number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Well, the variation for the minimum parking requirement is actually consistent with 777 Oakmont Lane and 850 Pasquenelli Drive. 850 Pasquenelli Drive is south of the detention center, that's south of the subject property. Both of those properties have, the minimum parking requirement is not being met, and the delta of the variation is, it's slightly, you know, below the 70%, but somewhat consistent with what we're proposing at 87%. Also, for both of those properties, the minimum parking stall size, I believe, is 20 by 10, and the parking stall size for those two properties is similar to the subject property, I believe, 19 by 8. So in that respect, it is.
18 by 9, I believe.
18 by 9, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. In that respect, it is similar to the properties in the immediate area. With respect to standards four and five, the, with respect to the minimum parking requirement aspect of the variation, the building has existed since approximately 1984. Theoretically, the only way to conform the subject property to the minimum parking requirement would be to reduce the square footage of the building, and that's just, it's not physically or financially feasible. With respect to the parking lot requirements, again, due to the physical configuration of the building, where the parking is oriented mostly towards the back and the north, it is not financially or physically feasible to reconfigure the parking lot so that it would orient to Pasquenelli Drive. With respect to standard number eight, the requested variation from the minimum parking requirement will not impact the public welfare or injure other property or improvements along Pasquenelli Drive within the zoning district or the general neighborhood. The requested variation from the lighting requirement will actually enhance the safety of the bank operations center and conform with dark sky specifications. And then with respect to standard number nine, under a variation, the existing building in prior use did not previously impair the adequate supply of light and air to the properties located north and south of the subject property, as is obvious from the slides. The proposed 833-square-foot addition of the rear of the building will not impair or change the supply of light or air. Everything's still going to be at the relative same height. Based on the traffic study memorandum, which is attached as Exhibit U, the requested variation will not substantially increase the congestion in the public streets. The site will not be accessed by semi-trailer trucks. Rather, regular-sized vehicles and some larger vehicles, no longer than approximately 38 feet in length, will access the subject property for business operations. There is a fire, there's exhibits E through M, and then O through S, and U also support and demonstrate the circulation, fire truck turning templates that would also support this particular element. And then finally, with respect to the lighting on the onsite parking lot, the proposed bank operations is, as we indicated, unique and atypical. The subject property's building will not function only as a typical office, but as indicated, the internal operation and the multi-shift nature of the bank operations center requires a level of safety and security greater than a typical office building. And then lastly, based on the letter of opinion from Appraiser Mary Lindberger, MAI, who evaluated the standard with respect to whether or not the proposed variations would have an impact on neighboring property values, she concluded, based on her analysis and research, that the requested variations will not diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. And then lastly, for site plan approval, there is, most of the elements we covered for variation, most of them overlap with site plan approval. There are only, luckily for all of us here, only a couple that I would just touch on very briefly. One has to do with the third element, or the third criteria for site plan approval, and that is the plans do not materially change the existing building, the parking lot, or the parking lot lighting, nor do the plans change any aspects related to any aesthetics or function of the existing natural environment. In fact, the applicant has submitted an application to the County of DuPage for approval for possible impacts of the turf grass area located within a buffer regulatory floodplain. And that would conclude our presentation. Again, we've submitted our proposed findings of fact in substantially more detail than what I attempted to outline before the commission. And for those reasons, we would respectfully request that the commission issue a favorable approval. And again, we remain available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, come in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be much less eloquent, but I will try to, at least for those of us that don't do this every day, give a general understanding of what the request is. So what's before us is, we have a business that's permitted in the zoning district, and then we want to make some modifications to the building. Like we've had in the past, this is an existing building. So we're trying our best to bring it up to more current standards based on the level of the improvements they're trying to do on this property. So first, for them to have this operations center, they need a space to pull the truck inside, basically. And it needs to be a safe space, so it's behind the building. They need to add this 800-square-foot approximately addition to secure the area so that they can pull the truck inside. To do that, they need to eliminate a few parking spaces and reconfigure the parking lots. So they are adding a little bit of parking on the north side near Pasquenelli there. They're adding a few spaces there. They're reconfiguring some of the spaces, so staff indicated, well, we'd like to see at least those areas brought up into substantial compliance in terms of landscaping. So for example, parking lots typically need to be screened with trees and shrubs. The parking lot on the north side to the adjacent building basically has grass, and that's about it. So you'll see on the landscape plans, one of the things that the applicant's providing is substantial buffering for, to the property, to the north. So other minor tweaks with the site plan are happening. I think they're putting a little security gate so that they kind of can kind of monitor who can get behind the building. But one of those improvements, because they are a bank facility, and safety is important to them, is lighting. And so they are dealing with a parking lot that already is very close to the property lines. They have worked with us diligently to try to make the lighting standards met. And I'm quickly going to go over what the lighting standards, the way they read. In the past, we've always translated this. When we talk in the planning and zoning realm, it translates to zero lot lines, or zero-foot candles at the lot line, or no light spillage off the property line. But actually, this is the way it reads. It reads, once in outdoor lighting, it says, where outdoor lighting is provided on any lot, the light fixtures shall be so designed and located as to confine the rays of light within the boundaries of the lot. That's where we get that there should be no light spillage. And then there are specific requirements for parking lots. It says, illumination of any off-street parking area shall be arranged so as to not reflect direct rays of light into adjacent residential districts or streets. So in this case, they have taken a lot of what's existing there. They're modifying it. They're doing their best to try to bring the lighting down, and they just can't meet those standards. A lighting variance is not a typical thing we see come before us. In this case, because of their requirements to keep it safe and secure versus what exists out there, and existing poles and existing spaces, they just can't make it work. So because none of us up here are lighting engineers, I did take their photometric plan. So in your staff report, I drew a kind of a fluorescent line as to how far it spills. It spills a bit into the western property, which is the detention area for the school. It spills a bit to the adjacent office property to the north, and it spills a bit onto Pasquenelli. However, I will emphasize that it is an improvement to the current lighting that's there. The current lighting is actually more offensive because of the way it broadcasts out. And what's important to note is, it is not spilling on that closest residential property to the southwest. It does not spill in that direction, and because of the L shape of that building, it kind of protects that residential property that's nearby. So those are the variances or requested. The other one is for parking. So as the petitioner indicated, it doesn't meet parking standards now. It doesn't have enough parking spaces based on our current parking code. We would consider it legal nonconforming. They are reducing the number of spaces, which is what requires them to come before us for a parking variance. They've indicated that their maximum amount for employees there is 80, and so they've indicated that there will always be excess parking based on their operations. Staff will note that the parking spaces were reduced by another two spaces to fulfill the fire department requirements. They wanted to make sure they could get around the building, around. They wanted to make sure they could get around the building, around the back of the building, so they actually asked for two more spaces to be removed. So that was at our request. And then finally, there's a site and landscape approval. And as with any others, we try to do best judgment in bringing things up to standard. So they're improving landscape, um, they are duplicating their parking stall size, but since they're moving everything around, we told them they should ask for another waiver to the board because it doesn't technically meet our parking stall size of ten by twenty. And as always, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to, uh, address this issue, question the applicant? Seeing no one, let's move on to the commissioners. Mister Thomas, would you like to begin?
Um, I don't have that much of a, of a problem because of the lighting, it's about the neighbors and that, and, and the, the parking, um, eighty employees, hundred and sixteen spots, so they're over. The only condition, um, addition is for the, um, loading bay. As of this moment, I don't, I don't have any, um, problems with the way it's been, um, presented.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Um, as far as the, uh, parking is concerned, we, our code does so, um, on the basis of, of square footage, and, uh, in their case, they're doing, uh, realistically, uh, on the employee count. And when you said eighty, is that on one shift, or is it forty on two shifts? Forty on each shift?
Combined.
Combined. So you, you will have eighty people there at one time?
No.
Oh.
That's the max, that's the max at one time.
Okay, so there's obvious-
It won't be there all, all at the same time, except for like shift change.
Okay, okay. So it's obvious that, that there's more than enough parking for your use, and I suspect, or having gone through all this, you're gonna be there quite a while, so there's, uh, I, I don't have any problem at all with your parking, um, request. Uh, and as to the lighting, uh, again, you demonstrated, uh, and so has staff, that this is, uh, the, an improvement to what exists currently, and perhaps an improvement over many of your neighbors who are living under the, uh, s- system under which it was developed. And, uh, since it's only spilling into areas that are not critical to other people, uh, I have no problem with that. And we appreciate the way you've cooperated with staff and, and, uh, trying to meet all the requirements, and, and, uh, I welcome you to Westmont.
Commissioner Sharp?
I have no further comments. I think Commissioner Van Buren's, um, summed up my opinion.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Well, you know, his eyes have a question.
I hope so.
Uh, my question can be, uh, directed towards the applicant, or staff, or both. And that is, uh, Mr. Osaro, uh, what happens, and Joe, what happens to this variation if, uh, part of this building becomes rental, uh, to a different type of use, a different type of parking requirement?
Formally, variations run with the property.
It runs with the property, right?
It would not, it, the variation will live in perpetuity with the property. It's not tied to a business.
So it wouldn't matter?
Correct.
But when a new business comes in, if it's a more intense use that requires a different parking calculation, um, we would look at the overall parking in light of the use if they come in for, let's say, an occupancy permit. But since it's an office use, if another office use comes in, um, it's permitted, and the, this parking standards are the same.
Yeah, I'm concerned more of that a different use comes in with a much more, uh, stringent requirement for parking above and beyond what the office would be, what would happen?
Yeah, we'd look at that and say, you've got to provide parking, or because it's a new use, come in for a new parking variance. This parking variance is based on an office use, so if it's something much more intense than that, we could look at parking again.
I think the only thing I'd add is, in the office research district, it's fairly limited to office uses. There's not a lot of other types of uses that can move in there.
Okay, I noticed, uh, the only other question I have is I noticed that there is a little discrepancy between the plan. I want to make sure that the number is right. And on one plan, on the ALTA survey, uh, we show a handicap spot on the north doorway. And we show that on, uh, a proposed plan, uh, under exhibit one, and then under exhibit two, I don't think that that's shown. So I just want to make sure that your request i- is correct as far as the number, because of that, that handicap spot is shown on some and not on the others.
Yeah, the, the ALTA survey just represents what exists today.
I understand that.
Yeah, all, all of the ADA stalls will be.
But the plan also, your proposed plan also shows one plan that has it and other plans that don't have it.
Yeah, okay, so that, yeah, all ADA stalls are gonna be moved to the front of the building, um, in the, in the proposed condition.
Okay, I'm just saying that, you know, I, I want to make sure if we consider this for approval, that we approve the right number.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm, but I, just so you know, on your plan, you do show a handicap spot on the side door.
Which plan are you looking at, just so?
I'm looking at, at exhibit one, and that is under tab D.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this, yeah, this is just, so what you're looking at is in existing conditions. It's, um, it's an area exhibit for, uh, our net new impervious area.
Yeah, I just want to make sure our numbers are right, that's why I-
Yeah, so the number is correct, yeah.
Okay, very good. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Clements?
Yeah, I do appreciate how thorough you are. That's very helpful for us. Um, I'm in agreement with the, um, parking and the lighting and landscaping. I think that it's a good fit. I think I would agree with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I as well, I really couldn't believe the extent of this package you have submitted, and the amount of detail was, uh, quite impressive. I as well have, uh, no, no comments. It, it seems a slam dunk to me. Any further, uh, questions from the public, from the board? Anyone in which case, uh, Chair would entertain a motion to approve, uh, under PZC zero four twenty-two twenty-two, this request from BHP, uh, PHDP Architecture and Fifth Third Bank regarding this property on North Pasquenelli, A, Pasquenelli, A, zoning code variance request to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls. So move Lavoy.
Second, Clements?
I have a motion and a second. Discussion of the item? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
And B, zoning code variance to request to permit outdoor lighting in excess of illumination standards.
So move Van Buren.
Second. Thomas.
Motion, second. Thomas, roll call, please.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Mister Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner, uh, Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
And C, site and landscaping plan approval. I have a motion?
Motion approved, Clements?
Motion approved, Clements?
I'll second. Lavoy?
Second, Lavoy. Discussion of the item? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales? I'm sorry, Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. There you have it, folks. Didn't take us long, as long as it took you. But, uh, staff will notify you, uh, when you're, uh, scheduled to go before the village board, uh, for your presentation there. Thank you very much for your-
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. We want to just thank Mister Heinerfeldt, too, for his diligence and staff and everybody's, but thank you for your consideration. Really appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, now, uh, everybody, uh, this is, uh, Commissioner Scales, whose, uh, flight from Kansas City was delayed, and, uh, we're glad that you were make it, you, you made it for this. There's no swearing in or pledge of allegiance.
No.
He can just-
But, but the minute should reflect, uh, Commissioner Scales arrived at seven forty PM.
Okay.
He's passing candy, he doesn't have four of them.
Next item on the agenda, PZC one eight four, there's two zero two one, a request from WCW Landowner LLC regarding the property at thirty-five-hundred Midwest Road, Oak Brook, Illinois, for the following. A, comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate approximately fifty-two-point-eight acres from parks, open space, to single-family attached residential. B, B three special development district amendment to remove approximately fifty-two-point-eight acres from an approved preliminary and final concept plan for a future rezoning request. And C, a conceptual preliminary plat of subdivision to define said fifty-two-point-eight Before we start, uh, on, on this agenda item, I'd, I'd just like to make some, uh, comments and clarifications about the, uh, procedures for, for this public, uh, hearing, uh, on this item. We are here tonight to discuss these three listed agenda items. Uh, this is part one of the process, uh, for the potential development of this property. Uh, many of you here, I'm sure, have seen a conceptual plan, uh, for the potential development of this property. We're not here tonight, uh, to, to discuss that conceptual plan. That conceptual plan was not a formal, uh, submittal, and it has not been reviewed by the village. The ultimate plan for developing this property may change significantly, uh, from this informal conceptual plan. Once development plans are formally submitted to the village and reviewed by village staff, there will be a subsequent, uh, public hearing to discuss the proposed development. The village will publish, uh, notice in the newspaper for any subsequent, uh, public hearings, and the village will mail notice to surrounding, uh, property owners. This subsequent, uh, public hearing will be your opportunity to comment on the actual development plans for the property. So if you're here tonight to discuss the unofficial, uh, conceptual plan, or to discuss the density for this property, or to discuss the means of access onto Cass Avenue, or to discuss, uh, potential rental housing, tonight is not the forum, uh, for such comments. That will come later. If someone does start discussing, uh, potential development of the property as shown on the unofficial conceptual plan, I, I unfortunately will have to, uh, cut you off because such comments are just not relevant, uh, to the agenda item before us tonight. And, uh, trust me, we truly value, uh, your, your opinions and your input, and we want to hear from you, but tonight is not the time to debate the ultimate development of the property. If you want to comment about the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan, uh, or the conceptual preliminary plat of subdivision, we certainly welcome, uh, your comments tonight. Because we do have a large crowd, and, and we want to hear from everyone who wants to speak on these, uh, agenda items, uh, if it looks like we're gonna have a long line of people, I, I, I may have to limit the discussion to five minutes or so, uh, per person. I, I hope we don't, don't come to that. But once everyone has had an, an opportunity to speak once, uh, then we'll allow people to comment for a second time, uh, time permitting. And if you're speaking as a representative, representative as a, for a group of people, then such as an attorney for a homeowners association, uh, and if the members of the association do not plan to speak in addition to you, uh, of course, I would give you a longer, uh, longer time to, uh, to speak. And finally, if you're simply repeating comments that other people have already made, I respectfully request that, uh, you simply state that you echo previous comments. We'll know your position without you having to repeat what's already been said. And so with those, uh, ground rules in place, I turn to village staff, uh, for, first, for an overview, uh, of this, uh, agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so it's a little unusual for me to speak, uh, first, and, and really, I'm gonna speak first, and then we'll let the applicant speak and do their presentation, and then I'll kind of wrap up, um, some more details. Um, but what I first wanted to talk about, and I'm kind of reiterating what, what you had said, is this is the first step of a multi-step process. And really, this comes from the, the standpoint, um, that our comp plan is our guiding document. That's usually what we turn to when someone asks for a development. In this case, the first request is to change the comp plan. So, uh, in this instance, um, we first have to figure out if what they're requesting, in this case, is residential, is appropriate for this property. So it's currently has a comp plan designation of, of, uh, open space, it's private open space in this case. Um, so basically, that, the, the first step is to try to figure out if residential is what we want to guide people, whether it's this development or the next development, when they approach us and say, what can we build here, once we figure out if it's, um, amenable to residential. The second step is, is the way you detailed it. So this is not a request for a rezoning. Um, this is not a request for, uh, uh, streets and access and number of units and type of units. Um, it, it does get a little bit into the type of units based on their comp plan request, and I will, after they present, I'll kind of, uh, elaborate a bit on the types of residential there is in the comp plan. Um, but basically, it's, there will be a second step that comes before this, where we will debate everything, and at that point, staff will have digested the project and, you know, and, and its relationship to our codes. So I'm gonna kind of reverse real, real quick the order, just because for me, it logically makes a little bit more sense this way, to think of it this way, is, the first thing we need to do is define an area. So they basically had said it's about fifty-two acres, and we said, well, what truly is this area? So that's why there's a plat of, uh, subdivision before us. Now, it's a conceptual preliminary plat, because at this point, um, they haven't done the required engineering, they haven't done a lot of the things. Basically, we said, we really can't talk about this unless we know what the area's gonna be. And so there are opportunities to amend the plat, because it will need to come back before you as a preliminary plat, and then ultimately, it will go before the board as a final plat. So basically, we need to define the area. Now, once we've defined that area, there's an existing concept plan that was created for this entire property in approximately nineteen eighty-four. Um, the B three, uh, zoning, which this is zoned, um, basically is a unified development. And they want to change that unified development and take this fifty or so acres out of it. They, they're saying that this will no longer be part of our unified development. So they need to amend that concept plan that was approved in nineteen eighty-four. And then finally, um, the comp plan designates the entire golf course, including the hotel, um, as open space, which basically, when we overlay that with our comprehensive plan, uh, adoption, we look at what is the preponderance of the property, and at the time, it was a golf course, and we grouped golf courses, both public golf courses and private golf courses, all the same, and we said, this is a private recreational area. So the entire area was overlaid with an open space designation. So their final request is, well, it can't be developed as anything, as long as it is designated open space, if they are to take these fifty acres out. And I'll speak a little bit more on, uh, development rights in the zoning district a little bit a- after they make their presentation. But basically, uh, for them to make a future request for a rezoning, the comp plan should guide them on what that is. In this case, they are recommending that it be residential. In this case, it is a residential of a single-family attached. So basically- basically, our comp plan has three designations for residential. It has single-family detached, which are your standalone homes. It has single-family attached, would be those standalone homes and homes such as row houses and townhouses. And then there is a multifamily designation, which basically are your attached units, which would be apartments and condos. So basically, there are three types of residential within the comp plan. So in this case, they're coming before us requesting the middle type, which basically would allow single-family homes and row homes or townhomes. So I'll kind of wrap that up there. I'll have a lot more to say later, once the petitioner makes his presentation.
Okay. And before I call the petitioner, I wonder if you, or maybe our village attorney, could expand and clarify a bit for me, this open space, private property versus, or including, or difference between that and publicly owned or village-owned open space?
I believe the way the comp plan states it, it states that it's publicly or privately owned recreational area, I think, is the way it's stated.
That is correct. So it could be park district, parks, whether passive or active. It could be golf courses, whether publicly owned, privately owned, or other open space, such as large stormarter detention areas owned by the village, but are otherwise kind of green open spaces. That's what the open space designation is generally.
And I believe the difference between publicly and privately is it's a private amenity versus a public amenity.
Thank you. Who from the landowner or developer would like to address this? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, and thanks for having me. It's nice to be in person and able to see people, talk to people. So my name's Russ Whitaker. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Rosenoben-Whitaker, 127 Aurora Avenue, Naperville, Illinois, here this evening on behalf of the applicant, which is also the landowner in this case, WCW Landowner LLC, the owner of the golf course property. Given the narrow scope of the hearing, as you went through, we've got a relatively brief presentation this evening. To start it off, I'm going to introduce Steve Ellingson. Steve is with the ownership team. He's going to talk a little bit about the background and the importance of the primary asset that they own, which is the hotel. And then I'll come back, and I'll talk a little bit about technical details. So with that, I'm going to ask Steve to come on up and provide some overview.
Good evening.
How's everyone's evening? Thanks for having me. Honored to be here. Many of you I've met before. I'm Stephen Ellingson, Vice President, Managing Director of the Oak Brook Hills Resort. I also am a partnership with WCW and KCB Ownership Group. Been there for over seven years now, operated the hotel successfully. We came along after a long stretch of Marriott, as you know, and made a commitment to Mayor Gunter to reposition the resort, made a commitment to the community to make it the living room of the community again. I think we've very much so been successful in that over the last seven years. As you know, we've had huge events there, including our New Year's Eve event, including Mother's Day, Father's Day, and many things, really, outreach back to the community and really making the property, you know, sort of a focal pointer, as I say, a living room. We call it the hidden gem of the suburbs. So with that, we've been very proud. Obviously, the ownership has owned it for eight years now. We intend to continue to own it. They've confirmed to me, and the asset is something that they want to hold long term. If you recall, the first version of that was an investment in the property of the ground floor, which was followed by the guest rooms. And to date, we've spent in excess of $22 million at the property, completely renovating the property from the ground up. I think those of you that have been there, the asset speaks for itself. At this point, we've been very, very proud of it and very successful. COVID, if anyone knows hospitality business, it was not easy. I went from 360 employees to 18 in two weeks. We never closed. Property stayed open. Mayor Gunter was very proud of what we did at that property to stay open and provide the community, not only a gleam of light that we stayed open, it's a massive property with 50,000 square feet of meeting space. And the meetings are gone, still to this day. Property has flourished through this. We really had opportunity to redesign how we do business, how we run things. We built back up. We had a really strong year last year, but unfortunately, our revenues are still 40% of what they were before. And this year is even better, looking to 23. Even better meetings and events are starting to come back. We're not wearing a mask today, which is a great thing, but the confidence is there. But the viability of running a 150-acre resort with a golf course has changed. And it's difficult. You know, I don't think if, maybe we wouldn't even be here if circumstances weren't different, but it is a difficult landscape in the hotel business. My vision and my commitment to the partnership is to run this property and make it a great part of this community. Without some changes, it's very difficult financially to do that. He won't speak, but Randy Bolstad over there has been the director of golf in our PGA Pro for over 34 years. And we've spoken about this extensively. He's a cornerstone of the community, and this property is. So it's not an easy decision, but golf is changing, and the landscape of hospitality is changing. So the reality of that is we need to make some changes, and we need to be able to provide a sustainable future for the resort, and some of these changes allow us to do that. So, you know, obviously, golf has changed, going from 18 holes to nine holes, I think, a proper nine-hole golf course. Randy and I've spent extensive time reviewing nine-hole golf courses, doing it the right way, investing in it the right way. We feel that along with that, this change then gives us some opportunity from some financial to reinvest in the property a bit, maybe reposition the property a bit, provide a more viable future in the community. Otherwise, we're really struggling as a business. And I don't know if you know, I think we are probably one of the largest businesses in this community, if not the largest. And so for us to be sustainable and be here is not only important to me, I've made a commitment to you, I've made a commitment to the mayor to be here long term, but also, we've got to make the business work. And so some changes need to come along with that. That's where I understand this. I also, unfortunately, golf is not what it used to be. Golf is changing, I think you know that. Maybe if Tiger Sun can reinvent the business of getting golf exciting, that would be awesome, but that's a little ways away. So we do need to rethink things a little bit, and that's some of the foundation of why this is here, not the only reason, but for me, as a business operator and operating a huge business, it's all about long term. It's all about making the changes so we can provide and build on to the resort and provide for the community the best way we can. We want to continue to have Fourth of July there. We want to continue, that will continue to happen. We want to continue to have, hopefully, New Year's Eve there again, and do those great things that we've done for the community. But if there's no resort, we can't do those things. So, you know, that's something that's very important to me. I feel that we've been, there's people that are in the room today that are neighbors. We've been good neighbors. I think we've facilitated good partnerships, many of them use the resort. I think we represent ourselves well. There are 300 full-service Hiltons in the United States and South America. We're in the top 20% of all of those, from a service perspective, from the guest perspective. So we're very proud of that. We've done a great job, and we want to continue to do that. So, you know, we, I, Stephen Ellingson, the person that really operates the property, want to do anything we do in partnership with not only the community, but our residents. We want to provide even a better facility than we currently have. We want to keep the facility open, and we want to be able to make it obviously profitable for our owners, but good for the community. And that is really where I stand on this, and I firmly support it, and I do think that the owners have a long-term vision for the property. So I want to implore upon that. This is not something that they want to continue to chop apart and do things with. You know, I think it stands as it does in and of itself. For me, it's really an important step in making the property stable, and allowing us to continue over the coming years to really provide an amazing opportunity for the community and for any guests that come to the property.
So I'm going to talk technical details. I think the reason I wanted to start with Steve is because when we see change like this, an asset that's been in the community for a long time, change can be difficult, change can be emotional. What we wanted to start with conveying is that while there is change here, the change we're proposing is incremental. We recognize that the Hilton is the primary asset here, and we're doing everything we can to reposition that primary asset in order to make it a long-term viable asset, and that has been the commitment of the ownership group over the last eight years, as Stephen has talked about. So as we begin to look at some technical details, Joe mentioned the concept plan. So the property was developed way back in 1984. When it was developed, this concept plan was approved. I presume there was a final one at some point in time, but documentation back then is not what it was today. So this is the concept plan we've been working from. The reason I show you this, and we'll look at another slide in a second, is there's three core components to the concept plan when this property was originally slated for development. I think it was 150 acres. You've got the hotel at the center, you've got the golf course around it, and then you've got an office campus. That office campus never developed, but that office campus was a core to the overriding concept of what was happening here at this property. Those three uses at that time were very much symbiotic uses. The golf course was attractive for businessmen who would be located or have offices in the adjacent office complex. That office complex would be drawing visitors from all over the country, and they would have an adjacent hotel that they could be staying at, that they could be dining at, and they could have entertainment with the surrounding golf course. So the golf course served the offices, the offices served the hotel, the hotel served the golf course and the offices. It was very intentional what was being done with the original development of this campus. What we see here, this is 1985 documents. So as we got going in development, there was a declaration of easements, covenants, and restrictions that was recorded against the property. And the reason I show you this is because it begins to show how the property was historically broken up. It's a little difficult.
I don't think it...
You're not able to see amounts, but what, if you can kind of look in the middle of that, you'll see parcel one, which is where the hotel was located. To the right of that, you see kind of a square, which is parcel three. That was your office campus designation. And then all surrounding that, you've got the golf course. And so what you'll see here, or what you saw there, and what you see here is common property lines that have been carried forward from the very inception, from 1984, when the development of this campus was originally conceptualized. We look at this today, and we look at the 1985 easements, and you see the property lines are really very identical to what was done there. And so when you look at our plans as we move forward, what you're going to see is that we're carrying forward most of those property lines. I mentioned, I already talked a little bit about the office campus not developing, but this is actually a 1987 aerial. You can do some cool stuff on the county's GIS system. So this is an overlay of a 1987 aerial that shows the property lines, and you can see the golf course in development. You can see the hotel building is existing, but still under construction. You can see that the office condos had not, or the office campus had not yet developed. In fact, what would happen is the golf course and the hotel would get up and operational. The Butler family, who was the original purveyor of the development, ended up losing control of the office site. The office site went through foreclosure, it was taken back by a bank. Redevelopment was proposed for residential. We'll skip over a lot of details, because there were a lot of details, lawsuits and back and forth. Ultimately, you move forward to 2002, and in 2002, development plans get approved for the Oak Brook Hills Condo Association, which is there today. So as we look at the city zoning documents here today, you can see the zoning map on the top of the screen, and the color coding for the zoning map off to the right. What I wanted to point out is you see the Oak Brook Hills property being sort of the hole in the donut of the property. So in 2002, that property was rezoned, it was rezoned to R4. When they did that, they never went through the process of amending the, I'm sorry, of amending the concept plan like we're doing today. So we'll see that in some exhibits as we move forward. But you can see the R4 zoning there, you can see the residential zoning to the west of us, and then higher intensity commercial uses to the south of our property. Stephen mentioned that, or I guess both of us mentioned, I talked about there being concern in lawsuits when Oak Brook Hills was originally developing. There was concern about whether residential use was appropriate in this location, being surrounded by the golf course, and whether they could survive next to each other. I think, and I've been to the hotel a number of times through this process, had the opportunity to meet a bunch of the folks at Oak Brook Hills. There's an obvious relationship there between the hotel and those adjacent residents, and I think that's developed into a positive relationship. And the history there over the last 20 years is evidence that, in fact, you can have golf and residential in close proximity and surviving in a very positive fashion, where residents are supporting that golf course and then supporting the hotel. So this is the plat of subdivision, whether it's preliminary or conceptual, or whatever we want to call it. This is how we are proposing to subdivide the property. What I would note is when you see the black lines around the perimeter, and you see the black lines, kind of thicker black lines throughout the middle, you'll note that there's, that big middle section is not included. So what we're showing there is we're respecting those lines, those property lines that exist today for the hotel property and for Oak Brook Hills. The subdivision we're proposing does not change anything with respect to a property line for either the hotel or for the condo association as they exist today. The only change that we're making with this preliminary plat is an internal property line, and so you can kind of see on the, Drew's going to point it out there. So that is the property line that we're proposing. We would be dividing the golf course basically into two pieces. Lot one is to the north and to the east. Lot two is to the south and the west. Lot one is actually larger than lot two, relatively close in size. I think lot one is about 57 acres, lot two is 52, 53 acres. Lot two, as Joe mentioned, would be set aside for residential development. That's our proposal for the comprehensive plan change. What I want to point out, and I want to draw attention to, is that lot one would be set aside, would continue to be operated as a nine-hole golf course. That is a critical component of the hotel owner's plan with respect to the property. But in addition to that, recognizing the sensitivity of issues associated with the development, we are showing on this preliminary plat a conservation easement. Now, this is being conceptual, as we've all talked about here. We've not gotten to the detailed terms of what that conservation easement says. That's a critical component. No one here would argue that. It's a substantial document that we're going to have to get to in order to get this project over the finish line. We are committed to doing that. We show the conservation easement on this preliminary plat very intentionally, because we wanted to signal to our neighbors, both at Oak Brook Hills and at Oakwood, that we were serious about it. We wanted to put it in writing and show that we were serious about it. If we had approval of a preliminary plat, and we came back and we did not have a conservation easement that was shown on a preliminary plat when we proposed a final plat, I think that this commission would say, you're not in compliance with your preliminary plat, and we're not going to approve you. And so it was very intentional here, what we were trying to do, signaling to the community that, in fact, the lot one area being 57 acres was going to be set aside in perpetuity as open space. Now, that might be a golf course, that might be something other than a golf course. Those are the details we'll work through as this project moves forward. With respect to lot one, I think that's really the reason everyone's very interested in this. With respect to lot one, the smaller of the two lots, we are proposing a comp plan amendment, as has been discussed.
Not lot two?
I'm sorry, I misspoke. On lot two, we are proposing a comprehensive plan amendment. That comprehensive plan amendment would redesignate lot two for attached, single-family What I want to point out is, and the commission knows this, and I think most of the people in the room know this, this is not the first time we've talked about redevelopment on a portion of this property. Redevelopment that has been proposed on the property here, a site plan approved in 2016, here, a site plan approved in 2017, has focused, in fact, on residential redevelopment of portions of the golf course and hotel property. What we're proposing at this point in time is a smaller-scale residential development of a portion of the golf course property, and with the designation that we've very consciously chosen, being attached, single-family residential development of that lot two portion of the golf course, we are trying to signal that it would be a lower-intensity use for residential purposes on that lot two portion of the property. So recognizing that there was a controversial process, there've been lawsuits on this property that go back decades, we're trying to come in. We've had conversations with a lot of folks in the community, working through various issues. Concept plans have been out there, as we've discussed those concepts. At this point in time, we have not made a submittal. We do not have a formal plan that has been presented to the village yet. This is step one. If we can get If we can get through this process and get clear direction from this commission and from the village board that you are interested in facilitating the redevelopment that is necessary to continue to support the hotel, we will move forward, and we will look forward to discussing more detailed development plans with respect to lot two. So with that, I've kind of talked through everything. I guess the one thing I didn't mention is this exhibit here. So the exhibit here is the change to the concept plan. So what we're showing here is the various lots, the three components, the hotel is unchanged. You see where the residential condo association is today. We actually have overlaid the old office buildings on that portion of the property. We used an aerial so you could see the residences, but because the concept plan was never changed to remove them from the B3 district or from this concept plan, we're still showing them as apart. And then we are taking parcel two, which is the future development parcel, and we're simply removing that from the concept plan. So it would no longer be part of this concept plan. I know there was a question with respect to existing land use. There's a couple pages in the comprehensive plan that speak to existing and future land use. So I think this is like page 51 of your plan, and I'm just cutting out the top of that map that provides a map of the entire city. But this is where you see that designation, the entire property, with the exception of Oak Brook Hills, is designated as open space. I think what you see here is a recognition of an existing use, and it's color-coded accordingly. Because I look at this, and I also see to the south of the golf course property, there is property in that office campus that is also getting color-coded green. I believe that's property that's owned by Ty Warner at this point in time, and is not necessarily slated for open space, but is slated for other development. But here you see it being picked up on this plan as existing land use. I think the other thing to obviously point out here is, you have a hotel, which is one of the largest businesses in town. That hotel property is designated as open space. Of course, that hotel property is not actually open space. That is a commercial business enterprise, which is zone B3. B3 zoning providing a broader range of commercial business opportunities. So when we look at the proposed land use, the future land use designation, what is supposed to happen, I think more than anything, what we're looking at here is a carry-forward of what was existing at a point in time. They're looking at the existing land use plan, and they're carrying it forward. You see not only the hotel property colored green on this future land use plan, but you also see the property next to the Ty Warner office building also being colored green. Again, that property is not zoned for open space, that property is zoned for commercial use and is, in fact, part of a business park. So I think that when this comp plan was updated, I don't know exactly how we got from existing to proposed, but I think there's a couple of examples right here with the property and adjacent property, where maybe there's a little bit of confusion as to whether that should, in fact, be designated as open space. In either case, I think with the hotel owner and the commitments that they've made in the community, the investment that they've made in the hotel, the change in a portion of the hotel, or a portion of the golf course property, redesignating that from open space to a residential use is absolutely appropriate and will be beneficial in the long term for the village because of how it will help facilitate the long-term future of the hotel. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Well, I'm sure there's someone from the public who would like to come forward.
Mr. Chair, can I?
I apologize. Back up. Let's allow staff to weigh in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to get my time, too. So Russ did a good, he did cover a lot of what I wanted to cover. However, I will just touch on some specific details. It sometimes gets a little confusing when we're talking about comp plan versus zoning. We're talking about a comp plan amendment here tonight, and that is what guides our zoning decisions. What you did here, the petitioner state was that it is zoned B3. So if you saw the zoning map that he had up there, it was bright red, which usually we designate towards commercial or business districts. So it is zone B3, the entire property is zone B3. B3 does have a laundry list of uses that can occur there. So he mentioned the last development that came through. One of the things that they were proposing was an apartment building. How were they doing that if the zoning was not residential? And what it is, is the B3 district actually does permit residential zones, or residential uses, but as a special use. So basically, like I had described before, that the B3 zone is a unified development, they were saying that's part of our unified development, and we're asking for residential of some sort in that unified development. In this case, what's different is they're saying that we want to disconnect these 50 or so acres from the unified development so it can develop independently of the use. And because a rezoning will be requested, that's why we're looking at this and saying, "Well, first, we need to get the comp plan in line." The comp plan doesn't say you can have residential here. So that's kind of one of the differences that's here. The other thing I want to, I kind of touched on it earlier, is the comp plan basically is very vague in a lot of respects in terms of how it defines residential. It basically just says there is single-family detached, which are your standalone houses, single-family attached, which would go to add townhouses and row houses, and then there is multifamily, which it basically describes as units with combined units, and it says apartments and condos. So the request that's before us is for one of those three types. What has not come before us is we don't know if it's one or the other, or a mix, and how is that mix, and how dense is that? That's not what the comp plan does. It doesn't talk about those things. That's what the zoning does. And so when a rezoning does come before us, that's when we have those discussions about what's appropriate in terms of rezoning. So that said, I'll go into the three specific requests, because I usually try to dissect everything. I'm going to do it in a little bit in that reverse order, just so that we understand my train of thought. So basically, the first is the conceptual preliminary plat of subdivision. So basically, the first thing we're acknowledging is, at this stage, we just want to know, "What area are you talking about?" We haven't gone into some of those details you would usually see for a preliminary plat of subdivision, where they make the investment into looking into the stormwater and many of the other aspects of a subdivision, because that's a significant investment. And if we can't arrive on a decision on whether residential is appropriate or not, then they're making an investment into something that we cannot discuss. So the preliminary plat, if you do read staff, the staff report, you will hear that the petitioner basically said, "They're trying not to move existing property lines." There is still some outstanding comments from staff. That's okay, we're allowed to disagree at this stage, because there's going to be another preliminary plat that would have to come before us. And really, staff is just really indicating that there are some improvements at the entry drive that would be sectioned off to this new property that really serves the hotel and remaining development. And staff basically has indicated, "We don't know if that's the best design. Legally, there's an easement there that allows them to be there, but we've just indicated that we see it a little bit differently, but allows for discussion in the next phase." We can also discuss that tonight if you wish. Moving on to the concept plan, that, to me, is pretty simple. They need to remove this area from their approved concept plan. And so basically, they're just showing that it won't be there anymore. So we don't, it amends an 18-hole golf course to a nine-hole golf course. Now, they did indicate, and this kind of goes, does go into that plat of subdivision a little bit more, that they're showing the remaining nine holes as a conservation easement. I will just reiterate, we don't know what that means yet, because we haven't been, we haven't seen any proposed terms, we haven't proposed any terms to them. Basically, at this stage, they're just saying they are willing to conserve that remaining nine holes in some way. We don't know what that means yet. And then finally, is the comprehensive plan designation itself. And so I think I described the three types. Obviously, you know, there's a lot of other comprehensive plan designations, they're just asking for residential at this point. So that's what's before us, but it doesn't mean that someone couldn't ask and say, "Well, we feel that there is manufacturing nearby, and manufacturing's appropriate, and we'd like to request manufacturing." When you're considering comp plan amendments, we don't have a guide. We're amending our guide, is what we're doing. So really, that's what's before us, is do we want to amend our guiding document so that any future requests, whether it's from these petitioners or another petitioner, does staff tell them we want to see residential here? Or does staff tell them something different?
And if so, what type of residential?
Exactly. And in this case, they've chosen single-family attached to give them the options that they want, but it excludes the multifamily component, which would be those combined units of apartments and condos or condo buildings, what we would typically see as a multifamily unit. And with that, I'm sure there's lots of questions. I'm always here to elaborate if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. And before we go to the public, I just wonder if the village attorney want to weigh in on anything?
No, I think Joe rightly pointed out that the comprehensive plan is a guide as to the future land uses, existing and future land uses within the village. It does not set forth details as to roadway layouts, dimensions, utilities, engineering requirements. It doesn't go into that level of detail. It's more, what is the underlying uses, goals, and visions of the village? Those more specific details are set forth in the zoning ordinance in the village's subdivision ordinance and other ordinances of the village. And Mr. Henry Fine mentioned there's no real guide for the village to rely on when creating a comprehensive land use plan or amending it. When we create a comprehensive land use plan, we go through multiple hearings and community meetings, we see input from various people, and there has to be a public hearing, and that's what we're here for tonight. But one thing we could look at is, what is the comprehensive land use plan, say, for the surrounding areas to this area? And I believe to the west, it shows multifamily in one section. It also shows single-family attached right across the street. I'm not sure if the townhomes of Oak Brook are shown as single-family attached in the comprehensive land use plan, I believe they are. And then further east, we've got the Oakwood subdivision, which is single-family detached. That's some of the residential surrounding uses that you can look at and see if what is proposed is consistent with surrounding comp plan designations.
Thank you. Now, from the public. Sir?
Russ, could I possibly have that one exhibit up on the, if you can chuck that to me?
I might get it to you via email. You run it the 1987?
I think it's the aerial photograph. Golf courses, that's the one, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Scott Date. I have the privilege of representing the owners of the residences of Oak Brook Hills Condominium Association. And we were here before, as it relates to this particular matter. My clients have had the pleasure of working with Russ Whitaker and the hotel ownership, as well as the proposed developer for this parcel of property, for the better, almost four months, and we've been in extensive communication. This does fundamentally present a, one, what I would call, binary issue. And it has to do with whatever remnant is going to be left of the golf course. This is, of course, a unified plan, and has been a unified plan for almost, I think we're pushing up on 40 years. This is getting into half a century. And if you go back to the inception of this unified plan back in 1984, those of us who are civil engineers on the panel will recall that wetland enforcement was not an issue in 1984. And when they designated the hotel site that you see in this particular photograph as being the site for high-rise hotels, they assumed that you would do with that parcel of property what everybody did in 1984, which is to show up with a bulldozer, dig up the wetland soil, get rid of it, fill it in, and then build on top of it. Well, by 1987, the wetland enforcement regulations and the Army Corps of Engineers was environmentally much more active in the field, and this parcel of property with its extensive wetlands was essentially undeveloped as a hotel. So this unified plan had to modify. It had to morph, and it morphed into making that particular parcel of property condominiums. Took many years in order to get there, because there were those people that still thought that it should be a hotel site, but the marketplace spoke very loudly to the contrary. It was not economically viable for offices at that time. So with that in mind, understand that my clients made investments in that particular parcel of property with 46 different condominiums, averaging close to $1 million per unit. So the people I represent have essentially a $40 million-plus investment in this particular community at that location, and they invested in a golf community. And the people that live to the east of this parcel of property have homes, and they've invested many of them since that development in a golf community. And there are other people in the area that invested to be adjacent to a golf community. So it is collectively very, very important what the village does with this unified plan. And this is a unified plan that is subject to your jurisdiction. So you have two choices. You can modify the unified plan, in which case, both the nine holes that they choose to develop are in play, as well as the nine holes that they choose not to develop are in play. And they can all become part of a unified plan, and you can tell the developer exactly what they're going to do with the other nine holes. Or they can simply chop off a chunk of the unified plan and elect to develop that portion of the unified plan separate and distinct from the plan from which it's severed. We don't think that's a good idea. We don't think that's a good idea for the village, and my clients are objecting to that. Now, months ago, we went to the hotel ownership and said, "Look, we will support what you want to do on this project. We're asking for a couple of very basic things. First and foremost, we have to have an enforceable perpetual preservation right over the remaining nine holes. If you want to sever off part of the golf course, put development in that, strengthen the hotel with that money, we're only going to support that if it is tied directly to an enforceable right to preserve the balance of that golf course in perpetuity. And we'd like to see it have a fair opportunity to be a golf course." Now, we have suggested that that should be in the form of a conservation easement. That's a legal document, your attorney is very well-versed in what they are and how they're structured. But the way that they are frequently set up, we represent the Conservation Foundation on dozens of these, and they are set up where the right of enforcement is actually granted to a public entity of some kind. We have suggested the Park District be that entity. And we want the hotel to be successful, and we want them to make money on the nine-hole golf course, and we think that they can. If they do it the right way, we think that they can, and we think that a nine-hole golf course run the right way would strengthen the hotel and allow it to be the best hotel that it can. We think it'd be better with an 18-hole golf course, they think it'd be better with nine. We want to give them the opportunity there. But we want to make sure that that is open space in perpetuity, and we really want to give it a good chance to be a golf course, because our $40 million investment is into a golf community as it was structured. So our request to the hotel months ago was, "Give us a conservation easement, put it in black and white, tell us what it's going to be, and this is how we propose that you structure it." They have elected not to do that, and that's their choice, which brings us here tonight. We are here on behalf of our group. We have stated exactly what our presentation was to them back in December. I'm going to hand this to Joe so that each of you has a record of exactly what we told the hotel back then. As it relates to the balance of the application, I'm not, you know how you want to do your comprehensive planning. I don't know how you take what is currently a golf course and say, "From a conceptual planning standpoint, we think that this portion of the golf course should be severed, and it should be turned into residential," without also planning the portion of the property of which it is a part. How can you plan just part of your comprehensive plan? It's currently a much larger parcel of property. Your comprehensive plan should speak to both elements of it. As it relates to designating this for residential in disregard for what it is a part of currently as a unified whole, we've asked the hotel... we've asked the hotel to commit not to do that. I think they're talking about doing that, but they haven't done so yet. We wanted to be very, very clear with the village. My clients have made fundamentally clear. They will oppose, and they will fight any particular proposal for this project that simply approves obliteration of part of the golf course and doesn't perpetually preserve the balance of that. So that's the end of my presentation. I wanted to keep it short.
Mr. Whitaker, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, we've got Scott's letter. We're not fundament, I don't think we fundamentally disagree on anything. I think it's a matter of timing. We've been working on a lot of various issues trying to get to this point. They would like to see the formal language of a conservation easement. We haven't gotten to that step yet, so that is, it is simply a timing issue. Our perspective has been that we don't, we shouldn't have to have that. There's no formal rights that are really vesting until we get to something final, something more formal. I completely understand and respect Scott's opinion. So we'll continue to work towards that. I guess my perspective is with Plan Commission, we're a recommending body. I don't know that, I think the Plan Commission is hearing that we're committed to a conservation easement. We're committed to preservation of nine holes of golf on that. Does that mean that we're, does that mean that we can say that it's going to be nine holes of golf forever? If Tiger's son doesn't save golf, maybe not. But the conservation easement will speak to those things. If not golf, what else? Would it be? And the intent is that it would be some form of open space. So I think that by, I do believe that the comp plan amendment speaks to the remainder because the remainder is remaining open space. There's a, there will be a record established here by which we have severed a part. And we've said this part is appropriate for development as residential. The remainder is going to stay open space. And at the same point in time, we're giving you the conservation easement, and the conservation easement will have language and body built behind it. And that's going to set a very clear record for what can and should happen in the future.
Thank you.
With the previous proposed development of the hotel with the apartment building and the natatorium and a potential residential development similar to what they're, at least a residential development on the Act Nine, there was discussions about a conservation easement over the front nine. And we discussed in the drafts what would happen if the golf course went away, and it was still recreational open space. And there was a buffer area created around the townhomes of Oakbrook so that it wouldn't be like a baseball field right next to the residences. It would be, that buffer area would be open space and not improved with recreational use.
I think it was to be administered by the Park District, was it?
Yes, it was. And that never got to the point of a vote or finalization. It was just a draft that was kicked around before that project ultimately fell apart.
Thank you. Now, from the public, I would suggest maybe we'll take the sign-in sheet, people who have signed in in the hallway, and just start from the top of that list.
Mr. Chairman, there is a small group of people in the overflow room, but I've checked with them three times. No one that's still sitting over there wishes to speak, and the few who do wish to speak have come into this room. So everyone who wants to speak is in this room now with us. I could either go through the list and read off their names, or do you just want to call people up?
Let's just start at the top and go down.
First name is Fred. First name Fred? No? Okay. Second name Scott Day, already spoken. Joan Gagan? Want to come up, Joan?
Given the introduction at the beginning of the meeting, I won't get into specifics, our specific concerns. I'm past president of the Indian Trail Townhomes. I've been original owner there. So we're concerned about the impact on the value of our homes. And I know I'm not, but it is. How will this develop? Personally, we would love to keep it open space. The golf course has been wonderful for us. If that isn't what it's supposed to be, we definitely want to be involved in it. There's a number of our fellow homeowners here and in the overflow room. And we haven't been in contact with the developers, but we do. We are very, very concerned about this, as we were with the prior proposal five years ago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next name on the list, first name Alan. Last name starts with a K?
This is Alan Corin. Thank you. So I'm Alan Corin, and I'm the president of the Saddle Brook Community Association. Saddle Brook is just a little bit west of us in Oakbrook. And I was here in, I was here in 2016 and 2018. So this is fairly familiar setting for me. And I'm honored to, honored to be here. And I know you're not, the commissioners aren't being paid to be here tonight. So I want to thank you for your service. You do a wonderful job. So I'd like to say that we've got some concerns. We're not going to be able to express them today. I guess that was expressed. We can't express all of our concerns today, which is fine. So I'm just going to say that we're in favor of open space as a general concept. It's great for many communities. People are working remote now more often than in the past because of COVID-19. And some people are thinking of living possibly instead of in Chicago, they want to live in the suburbs, and they like the idea of living in an area where there's open space. The open space is just precious. Outside activities now, you see so many people participating in outside activities. What type of outside activities? I'll mention one, walking, just walking. You see more walkers now, bike riders. Also something that's taking place is golf. You're seeing an explosion in golf. In Oakbrook, the village golf course is just setting records for the amount of golfers that are just lining up to play golf. But it's not just in Oakbrook. It's all over the country. People want an outdoor activity. So open space is very important because it allows for people to live in an area they're comfortable in and enjoy it and be able to exercise when they want to. So we are in favor of open space. We're not in favor of congestion. And we think it's very, very important. I moved to this community in 1980. At that time, the area where the Oakbrook Hills Golf Course and Hotel is located was the Healy Farm. The Healy Farm was a wonderful example of open space. The Healy Farm was sold to Paul Butler, and he developed the Oakbrook Hills Hotel, which we all love. We love the Oakbrook Hills Hotel. We're all in favor of the hotel. We would like anything that could be done to preserve the hotel. The hotel is a gem. It's a gem for Westmont. It generates revenue, and it generates visitors. The people come and populate your stores. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing. It's a treasure. And whatever you can do to protect that hotel should be done. And if part of the golf course is developed and there's proceeds, I would like, I have a question to ask. Will the proceeds, all of the proceeds be directed to the ledger for the hotel? Or is it only part of the proceeds from the development of the back nine holes will go to the ledger on the hotel? In other words, to what extent is the hotel going to benefit? I guess that's what I'm asking. And that's a question I think you as commissioners may want to ask also because you want to see that the hotel thrive. And now we're talking about going from an 18-hole golf resort to a nine-hole golf resort. So if this is going to enhance the hotel, as, I mean, a nine-hole golf course is going to enhance what previously and currently is, an 18-hole golf course, then I think some data should be presented to this, to the commissioners and said, listen, in A, B, C, D, and G, these are examples where we've gone from an 18-hole golf course, and we've gone to a nine-hole golf course, and this is how we flourished. Really, the customers really want, that's what they want. They're looking for a nine-hole golf course. When they do their shotgun starts, they prefer a nine-hole golf course to an 18-hole golf course. So I'm just going to end it there, but I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want to have the hotel representative answer the question that was asked about use of the proceeds? Certainly. There's been commitments that there are renovations and investments in the hotel. I don't think we're interested in getting into a discussion about everything that's been spent and everything that would be spent in the future. So we're not, we're not here to negotiate what we do or how we spend money that would be earned off of it. Certainly, there has been a regular discussion that there would be continued investment in the hotel. And we've made good on the, we've made good on it. You've seen what's happened under this ownership with investment in the hotel up to now. We were one of the few hotels that stayed open through COVID. And we've been there, we've been flourishing. So I don't think that getting into a discussion or trying to hold us to a commitment that everything be spent on renovation of the hotel is at all appropriate.
Thank you. And I wonder if it would be appropriate to ask our golf course manager and golf club manager his opinion of 18 holes versus nine holes? And I think it's applicable to this discussion. Good evening.
Excuse me, real quick. Did you sign in earlier?
No, I didn't.
Could you just write your name and address, please?
Sure, well.
My name is Randy Bullstead. I am the head golf professional and director of golf and grounds operations at Oakbrook Hills. I've been fortunate to have been there, well, I've been there since the property opened. Seen a lot of positive things with that property. Like Stephen had mentioned, it is the gem of the suburbs without a doubt. You ask about an 18-hole versus nine-hole. The gentleman was talking about how busy Oakbrook Golf Club is. Yes, we are too. We've been solid since, you know, people were able to get out of their houses and enjoy the outdoor areas. And, you know, we are looking at a potential of a nine-hole product. And we jumped on it right away of doing a lot of research into what a nine-hole golf course is. You've got Twin Lakes in your backyard here. You've got several other nine-hole golf courses here that are experiencing the same as the 18-hole golf courses are, busy as all can be. And I'm anticipating with the nine-hole golf course that it would be a busy golf course, without a doubt. We've had people that were entertaining already, understanding that we might potentially go to a nine. They want to bring a league to our property. I've talked to several of the golf professionals in the community, and they all agree the ones that the nine-hole golf courses are, that a nine-hole golf course, there are more and more people that are looking to play nine holes today than there have ever been. A lot of these golf courses are doing anywhere from 30,000 to 35,000 rounds for nine holes. We've been averaging anywhere from 25,000 to probably 28,000. So, yeah, we've experienced inflation of people playing at our golf course without a doubt. National Golf Foundation does say that potentially there will be a decline coming. May not be for four or five years, but they anticipate the growth of the game will go back to possibly where it was before, and it was not improving at all. I'm in total favor of this, you know, going to a nine-hole product. We look forward to doing, you know, more leagues, more junior golf programs. We're going to increase our instruction programs there because there is a demand for it. And there's a big demand for it. So we have a little learning and performance center, and we're looking to expand that as well so that we're going to be able to capitalize on a lot of people that want to take up the game but maybe haven't because they just can't play 18 holes. So to make a long story short, yeah, I think nine holes will really be successful there.
Thank you, Mr. Bullstead. That was very helpful. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Next name on the list is Bob Iverson.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. I am not a resident of Westmont, but I do live one mile due west of the property. I'm a user of the golf course. Personally, I like an 18-hole, so I would probably take my business elsewhere for that reason. But I just want to make the point that as a resident of the area, and we all share uses of the various surrounding communities, you know, Oakbrook. Residents shop in Westmont. We eat in Westmont restaurants. Westmont residents shop in Oakbrook and use the open spaces there. But I guess the point I want to make is that this is a huge reduction in the open space. I want to thank you for clarifying the difference between the comprehensive plan and the zoning. I think that's probably lost on a number of people that were confused. And we assume that the comprehensive plan was equivalent to the zoning, which it isn't. But I think this one-third or even more than that now reduction in the open space for this, these multiple parcels is just a terrible hit to the open space. You know, the uses of the land have been in dispute for, you know, over 100 or 250 years, right? British and the French fought over it. The colonies finally won it from the British. And then they disputed it with the Potawatomi Indians and the Cascadia Indians. And ultimately won that dispute, and Indians ceded it to the US government in August of 1816. I think Westmont was incorporated in the 1830s or 40s, about that time. And you've been in control of it since that time, I think.
100 years.
So for a long time. But just the loss of over 50 acres of open space is just a terrible loss to me personally, and I think a majority of your residents and surrounding community as well. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks for coming tonight.
Next name on the list, I think it's two first names. Art Joian? Are you good?
Okay.
You sure? Next name on the list, Kit O'Kelly?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for hearing us, and thank you for your service as well. I, on August 31st, bought a unit at the Royal Hills Club after spending months and months and months trying to find a home in DuPage County and even in northwest Indiana. I finally came to this place because I love the community. I love the open space. I love the open space, and I love the limited traffic. It's not residentially dense. It's a pleasure to drive around. It's not, I have access to Costco, the things that I need in life without being stressed when I leave my home. So I'm directly across the street at Royal Hills Club from what the development is planned. I have to say that I am speaking tonight for myself and for many of my neighbors and friends and owners at Royal Hills who cannot be here this evening. We are completely opposed to any change to this designation from open space to anything. I think the primary concern is how it will impact the neighborhood, how it will impact this community that we chose to live in and invest in. And if it is then now a more densely created neighborhood, it has nothing, it is so far removed from what it was that we, where we made our initial investment. it has nothing, it is so far removed from what it was that we, where we made our initial investment. And I have to say, and I'm sorry that this sounds as cold and as awful as it does, but I have to say that to change a designation for a business, one business, to increase their revenue, to change utterly the residential community in this area for one business, I am opposed to, and many of us at Royal Hills are also opposed. And hey, if nine holes are going to make you a lot of money, not two sets of nine holes. Just keep that back nine. Figure out a different way to use it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next name on the list, Greg Butler. Sure. Russ Whitaker already spoke. Steve Ellenson already spoke. Jennifer Sinbes. Suisse, sorry. Ready?
Thank you for having me. This is the first meeting I've attended here. I am one of those people that that gentleman talked about who moved from the city about a year ago. And I moved to this area very much because of what you were just saying about the open space. I lived downtown for 26 years, and I currently am right off of Indian Trail. So to me, to hear about this development, and I completely understand the situation that you're in, and I know that everybody appreciates your hotel. Everybody appreciates the golf as well. I golf myself. But the issue that I have is if this plot two or the parcel two that you were talking about, my guess is that the entrance to that would be off of Cass Avenue. And if that's the case, the traffic is going to be increased so much to the point where there's probably going to be a stoplight. And who wants to have a stoplight, another stoplight on Cass Avenue? So my vote, and I know, you know, I may be getting into territory that you said that I shouldn't be saying right now, but my vote would be no. But my question to you is, if you were going to go forward with this, why not keep the open space at the Cass Avenue area? Because that's the area we all like to look at when we drive by and we see it. It doesn't look like Naperville. If homes are there, I feel like it's going to look like Naperville. I could have moved to Naperville. I didn't want to. And then that inner part where the parcel one, where it's larger, where there are other homes over there, why wouldn't you use that as the area to keep the residential community more intact? And then you could go to your nine holes. But again, I'm in favor of 18. So, but that's my assessment, having just been, you know, a part of this community for a year. I think it's a really lovely place to be out of the city. It's quiet. And that's just my two cents, but I have a feeling a lot of people probably feel the same way I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next name on the list, Chris Kepner.
I believe he was here with the first case.
Oh, okay. These might be true for the next ones as well. Steve Corcora.
Yep. Yeah, that was the banking group.
Yep. And then the last name on the list, I think was their attorney, Ramos.
I believe so.
Okay. That's it on the list. There may be others.
Okay. Thank you. Again, anyone else? It's your last chance. I think it's been a good discussion, and before we go to the commissioners, yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Fred Leinweber. I live in the Oakwood subdivision.
Are you signed in?
Yes, I am signed in.
Okay, and you swore in.
I don't think I swore in. Was I supposed to swear?
You swear that any testimony you give tonight will be the whole truth, so help you God.
Absolutely.
Good, thank you.
So I want to echo, I'm not going to get into the rehash what everyone said, but I agree with everyone what's been said regarding population density, maintaining green space. The one thing I want to do, that I do want to bring up to this board, is to keep in mind, when we talk about rezoning, is we're talking present day, but what are we also talking about in the future? And you've been a great partner in the community, but what happens if you're sold off or there's a new owner? So that's something I just want this board to take into consideration is when you rezone it, what can of worms you possibly could be opening up down the future? So I ask that you maintain it currently as it is, a green space. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay. And again, before we go to the commissioners, I'd like to thank everyone who did come out tonight and participate in this. We do appreciate it.
And thanks for honoring the chairman's wishes about limiting the topic of discussion tonight to the agenda items. It really helped move this meeting along, and as he said, there'll be a chance, if this development goes forward, to provide more substantive comments on the actual proposed development. So thanks for that.
Commissioners, let's start with Commissioner Van Buren.
Well, understanding the plight of the owner, I would be, not be opposed to residential, but the only residential use I would support would be single-family detached homes on what would be normally our three lot, 7,800 square feet per lot. Beyond that, I cannot see. So I can't support it.
So that item A is single-family attached, and you're saying that...
I cannot support the attached. I would only support single-family detached.
And why?
Because of the density.
Okay.
Just, I just cannot see packing all these units in there. And again, it's hard to discuss it without talking about a plan.
Yeah.
But that's my feeling. It's just, I just don't want anything that high-dense, low-dense.
Understood. Commissioner Sharp.
Yes, thank you. So as I understand it, the first item is the plat of subdivision approval, and this is just a concept of what could be presented later, correct?
I was talking to the second.
So we don't need to, we're not actually approving any preliminary plat, or are we?
You are going to vote on it. It's not a binding preliminary plat that then will convert right away to a final plat because it doesn't show easements. It doesn't have engineering.
It's simply for the purposes of defining the land area,
and you can vote to approve this conceptual preliminary plat to define the land area generally.
Okay.
That's all your vote would signify.
Okay, generally. I did read through some of the comments that were made back and forth through the, between the village and the applicant regarding certain property boundaries, mostly to do with the entry. I would like to encourage the owner to work with the village. It seemed that the tone of some of the comments were rather stiff or firm for this early in the process, but I would encourage collaboration and teamwork with the village and the owner as you're developing these property lines and future versions of this plat. The way I understand the difference between, you know, reciprocal easements versus property lines, and I understand that the village has preferences, which serves their ability to maintain and organize land in the village, I think it's worthwhile listening to their opinion and working it out with them on future concept plans. I don't have any of the comments on the concept plan amendment. From what I understand, the concept plan never came to fruition as it was intended with this very symbiotic relationship between hotel, office towers, and a golf course. Those three things make a lot of sense together. That was never really realized. So this has been a plan that has been working in a flexible way from the beginning. There's always been flexibility in what this property is going to be because it never, it never came to fruition, the perfect, the ideal that it had. I think when I look at, I understand the plight. I myself don't golf, but I do enjoy driving past it and looking, and like Will said, it's a nice view. But I understand that, you know, hotel industry, certainly, I get that, is not what it was. And so I believe that there is a genuine plight to need to reduce the kind of capital investment in the whole, in the whole concept plan. And so I'm in favor and not opposed to kind of bifurcating this into two smaller segments. The question is what, you know, what does it become? What does that segment become that's getting split? And when I look at the zoning map and the concept plan, there's a lot of different uses around. There's a lot of different, both proposed and current. So there's a healthy mix where there might be different opinions on this board as to what the best use would be to amend the comprehensive plan with. But when I look at it, it's on a, it's on a busy arterial corridor, Cass Avenue. It's, has a lot of heavy traffic on it. There are industrial uses, business uses, multifamily, and attached family all up and down that corridor. You don't see single-family on that corridor. And so I think it can go single-family, and I think that it might be appropriate, given that this is currently a golf course. I would be in favor of an attached, a single-family. But I wouldn't want to see a typical density because part of this plan has always been this idyllic golf course setting. And I think that we need to respect and honor that as this moves forward so that when we develop this parcel, it's developed in a way that seems appropriate to its adjacencies, in which this case is a golf course. And a lot of residences that invested in this area with it being a golf course and having that aesthetic. So I think it's important to keep that and not try to go super dense with whatever zoning we end up saying makes the most sense. There's different densities in whatever zone we, whatever land use we want to give it. So whatever land use we give it, my point there is just it should be less dense for whatever that use is. But in terms of the actual use that's being proposed, our, our...
Single-family attached.
Single-family attached. I'm on the fence. I want to hear what other commissioners say. I'm not opposed to it, but I am a little afraid of possible density that that might allow. That's all my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Scales.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, glad I could be here. Apologies for being late, outside of my control on the airlines. Generally, I think I'm probably agreeable to what is put in front of us today. I recognize that it's private property owned by private individuals that, you know, times have changed, and there's things they need to do to get the highest and best use out of the property they can. So that being said, I do have a couple of questions based on some of the, some of the things that were discussed and then also in this letter. And I will preface by saying I'm not an attorney. I like to think that's a feature, not a flaw. But I do have some questions kind of based on something, you know, I guess first off, we talk about this open space, and, you know, I hear unified plan, common law, subdivision, a lot of these things that are thrown around in this letter. And I'm curious, is there an agreement that's in place from a previous development that requires open space for the residents? Anything that exists?
No. There are easements across the various parcels for access and drainage. So there is interplay between, for example, the residences of Oakbrook Hills and the hotel property and the golf course. But there's not any sort of covenant or restriction requiring the property to be maintained as open space perpetually.
Okay. And then did the townhomes come at a close time with this development was done? And pardon me, I mean, I don't have the history on that. What was the, how long after the townhome, or after the hotel was built, golf course was built, did the townhomes come into play?
Yeah, around 2000, that property was sold off to a developer. It was the area designated for potentially three office buildings. That never happened. So that property was sold off and developed separately.
Okay.
2000.
And this may not be germane to what's in front of us, but they mentioned, at least this letter that I'm reading, from Daze Group about there being a perpetual, basically in perpetuity, having open space that would always be there. Is that something that you can, I assume you can agree on anything between private parties, but is that something that would be put in place and...
Well, that remains to be seen. The applicant's attorney has committed to working towards that. It's not something that the village can necessarily impose on property that's not part of this development, but it's something that neighbors can certainly raise. The village can certainly raise as something they'd like to see, and hopefully something that can get put into place to everyone's mutual benefit.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's it. I appreciate the presentation from everyone that spoke tonight, and thank you for the public feedback as well.
Good.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy.
Of course, my comments are long. I took a lot of time on this case, but I really thought that this case is about a fundamental issue related to a change in our direction from the vision of our comprehensive plan as it was drafted. The plan is certainly dated, and I recognize that some components in the plan need to be addressed because of the age of the document. This particular case that is before us is of great importance for several reasons. The case is about the potential changes to the open space as the spirit of the comp plan defined it, not as our code defined it, as Joe described in his staff report. The case is about a critical decision, really, for our future. And it's about the remaining 14% as defined. And I think that that calculation of 14% of open space was done, was mentioned in the comp plan as part of this developer, or this proposal to change the comp plan. That was part of that 14%. And I think that was the interpretation back then of open space. And that's why when you put the plan up there from the comp plan, it shows that space is being green. Because in their minds, they contemplated, and the spirit of that document was that that was, in fact, open space, even though technically we have other definitions elsewhere in our ordinances that may be in conflict. And that's nothing new because that happens to us all the time. As we move forward in life here, we have layers upon layers of old antiquated definitions and requirements and that kind of thing that we have to fix all the time. But the case is about our future and what's going to happen there. And that definition that is in the comp plan, because the comp plan is the subject of tonight's discussion, it has those conflicting and inherent statements in it. But, you know, as part of my work to review this, you know, I really needed to go and, believe it or not, I have it here somewhere. I'll mention it now, that as part of the preparation for this meeting, I read that comp plan more times than I can tell you because I really wanted to understand how it was originated, how the process worked, which is really laid out in the comp plan. It talks about all the community involvement. It talks about all of the meetings, all of the input. It talks about the professionals that are preparing it. There's many components of that comp plan. So in preparation, I reviewed the materials that the applicant submitted. You can tell that, you know, my comments are much different than others because we review it independently. I then just read that comp plan and went through and itemized all the items within the comp plan that I felt that had a relationship between this particular case and not necessarily how it was defined as open space. necessarily how it was defined as open space, and not necessarily the, the, the way it's zoned. I looked at it from the perspective of what their goals were in the comp plan, and how they derived those goals, and how they, they, they listed those goals for residential development, how they listed those goals for the overall community, for the overall benefit of Westmont, and how much time and effort that comp plan took to get that to, to be a document that, that we could use for this long. Yes, it needs updating, but I think that the spirit of that document and the way it was created by, by not only staff, commissioners, trustees, people that live in the community, all of the workshops that took place, all of that information was compiled and put together to come up with that comp plan. And then, I sat back after I read that comp plan for many, many times, and I said to myself that this particular case has really a huge level of importance because of the, of the context of the comp plan and how it was derived. And I felt a whole bunch of respect for the people that spent so many hours of their time to put that comp plan together. And then I looked at the, at the particular items that, that are in the comp plan as it relates to the goals and all the, the definitions and the way they describe each particular goal for each particular area. And I feel that, that I have an obligation to everyone here to make sure that, in my opinion, and the opinion that I render here tonight, that we get this right. Because if we don't get it right, there's only 14% of open space left. If we don't get it right, when we make changes to the comp plan, we're doing our residents a disservice, we're doing the future residents a disservice because of, of the way we approach this. So I, I think that when I look at this, I, I have to consider the surrounding areas, the surrounding communities, the extremely high importance of, of a amendment. And listening to all of you tonight, what I really, my gut feel tells me is that the comp plan amendment should not be driven around an application. Because of the way, the way this document was written initially, with all the community involvement, and all of the, the influences from everyone in the community, not only the people here tonight, but there was so much work done on it, and from so many different perspectives, that I think that if we need to make a comp plan amendment, we should do it in the same manner that this was done. We should have the community involvement, we should have the, the, the professionals come in and update the comp plan in the right way, and not have it custom-driven around a particular applicant. Is it right to actually, for us to just decide that we're going to, to go ahead and, and make an amendment to the comp plan ourselves without that process? And, you know, I just believe that, that the comp plan done in this way, that I can't support it. I really can't. I have too much respect for the pages and chapters of, of this document that was written, and I just feel that we should approach the comp plan amendment in a different way than what we do tonight with this applicant. And then, finally, I could say that out of all of the, when you list not just specifics about what property is open space, what property is zoned, what district, when I look at the goals, and I look at the, the, the way they're listed in the comp plan, and the approach that they took to the comp plan, I, even though it's dated in 2013, I can't say that those goals would be a whole lot different than if the plan was dated 2022. I really don't. I really think that when you look at a goal, and you look at, at strengthening Westmont's desirable regional competitiveness by preserving the quality and character of its residential areas, those kinds of statements are laced through this comp plan. And I think by amending the plan in this manner is doing our community a disservice. And it's, I don't feel as though that the applicant is at fault here, for sure, but I think that we need to approach this in a lot different way. At this time, I cannot support that comprehensive plan amendment for those reasons. And I can't support the preliminary plat or the, the, preliminary final concept amendments on that basis. I just have too much respect for the way this was done, and the way it should be done, and the way it should be amended, and not based on an applicant. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
And just one comment, not directed to you, but in general, and I obviously don't care one way or the other how, how this is voted on, but this is Zone B3, regardless of what the comprehensive land use plan says. And there's a little bit of a disconnect between the zoning designation of B3 versus the comp plan designation of open space. Perhaps it properly should have been studied as a subarea, this whole Hilton development, and broken down into subparts and envisioning potential future development of the golf course, and that was never done. It was just stamped as open space. And when you look at the B3 district, the existing zoning, what can the owner develop as of right right now, regardless of what the comprehensive land use plan says? Because the comp plan is a guide, but the zoning really dictates what can occur on the property. So, things like, I've got the list pulled up, but it's, in addition to hotels, it's medical offices, administrative and other type offices, utility uses, governmental uses, a host of different retail-type stores, bakery stores, financial institutions, health clubs, on and on. There, there are quite a list of, of things that can go on that are more commercial in nature, despite what the comp plan designation is. So, I just ask you to keep that in mind when you consider what's the highest and best use for this property. You may think it's open space, which is obviously your right, but regardless of that, the developer could come in with a conforming plan to develop that land with one of these permitted uses, and you'd not have a lot of right to, I, I guess the comp plan would not support a denial of a permitted use.
Could I, could I follow up on that?
Absolutely.
Question. So, right now, we're, part of this is also approving an amendment to a concept plan. So how does what you just said about allowing permitted uses tie into this change of concept plan?
The concept plan, well, good question. I don't know that it called out, I haven't studied it other than it shows a comprehensive development for the area by a single owner, right?
I, I don't believe that the concept plan showed any property lines or anticipated a lot division.
I guess my, my question is, could, let's say that we want, we want to have a giant Amazon, whatever they call those, Amazon grocery stores, giant big box grocery store or something there? Yeah. But obviously, that's not in the concept plan, so is that, would the concept plan be a sticking point where we could say, no, we, we don't want this? Basically, is that, is, when you say permitted use, and yet we have this concept plan that we're amending, that's what I'm confused about?
We don't have a concept plan necessarily, do we? We have...
We have one from the 80s that we're...
From the 80s, right? That, we're, we're going to change that, correct?
We're voting to change that.
Right.
Just to pull this property that's proposed to be developed out of that concept plan, because it was, the concept plan showed a unified development for the whole area, but I don't know if it showed a golf course for this area specifically?
It, it showed a golf course, it showed the hotel, it showed the parking lots, and then where the townhouses ultimately developed, it showed three office towers and then parking lots in the middle of them.
Okay.
And, and basically, that's all it showed.
Yeah. So if you feel like this should not be developed piecemeal and carved out, you can vote against the amendment to the, to the concept plan. It has been previously approved by the village to carve out a chunk for the development of the residents of Oak Brook Hills, and that also was not shown in the...
Right.
1980s concept plan.
Economic Development, or Director Sylvester?
If you don't mind me trying to shed a little light on this, and John, if I mischaracterize any of this, feel free to let me know. This is complicated stuff. John and Joe and I discussed this a couple of months ago, when we were trying to figure out how this proposal would be processed, what the reviews and approvals would be required. I believe we looked at the B3 zoning district, and in the B3 zoning district rules, there's this provision that development requires approval of a, a concept plan and maybe a final plan. We couldn't find any final plan, all we could find in the records were this, was this concept plan from 1984. And our discussion was that if the property owner wanted to do something substantially different than the, the current development on the site, they would need to go through the step of saying, hey, we want a, we want approval to change the concept plan from 1984 that we've been operating under ever since, with the one wrinkle that in 2000, they amended the concept plan, and this is just my opinion, the village didn't require the property owner at that time to go through the step and say, hey, we want to change our concept plan, get rid of the offices, put in townhouses, but we thought that this time, we would have the property owner go through that step, because of the provisions in the B3 zoning district, and the reference to development requires a concept plan. Does that...
No, that's completely accurate.
Thank you. I think that helps. Chris, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just think that, you know, I didn't talk about any of the objectives that were listed, but there are many in, in the comp plan. I'll just read one. I picked out 20 of them, but it says, in Chapter Four, for residential areas, align subdivision and zoning regulations with the comprehensive plan to ensure that housing densities and patterns surrounding land uses and access to local amenities within neighborhoods evolve in order to achieve a predictable result. And those are the kind of things that, you know, when I read the concept plan, I, I kind of get a real flavor for what that document, what the spirit of the document is. And that's why I feel the way I do about a comp plan amendment in this manner.
Thank you. Allison Clemens?
In different ways, and I really appreciate everyone's input, on both, both sides of With the concept plan, I do think that the, having residents on there could work. I understand the issues with the hotel and golfing. I'm a golfer, but it is steering more towards nine holes, people don't have time golfing. So I can see why they would want to take the land and have another use for it. I would like to see, with the residents, it would be a concern of if they were going to put businesses and stuff like that, but with the residents, and I think it can work well with what they have now and complement it, and I, I don't, so, on that note, I would be in favor of it.
Thank you. And finally, Commissioner Thomas?
The owner has stated how golf has changed, and, and, but you're being busy. You're being busy at 18, do you want to change to nine? How, how is it, how, how do you feel, or you're a golf expert, feel golf is changing that, is it economically, well, obviously, it's going to be economically, that'll get your attention?
Yeah. So, I, I represent the landowner here. I, I represent developers all over the community. I can tell you that my firm worked on redevelopment of a golf course in Lamont last week, and got approval from a planning commission. I got final zoning approvals for a golf course in Algonquin last year.
From what to what?
To residential in both of those cases, and we worked on another golf course a couple years ago, transitioning to residential. So, this is not an isolated situation. COVID has changed a lot of things. I don't know that the changes from COVID are going to be long-lasting changes. I think we look at things, and I, I believe people are going to be, go back to the office. I believe that, yes, people are going to adapt to being outside, and hopefully, people will be outside more often, right? I'd love to kick my kids outside more often. But the, there was a very consistent and long-term trend in the game of golf, and it was going from here down. And I, I think we could talk about, if we looked historically at the rounds of golf that were being played here, or have been played nationally, the direction has been down. And so we, I, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but there was a, there was an article that I'd cited in a previous case, where there had been like six new golf courses that had opened in the last two years. At the same point in time, there had been like 200 golf closures. So, there was a time, there, there was a time when we were building golf courses across the country, and demand was surging, and the, the game was popular. That's not the case. Nobody is building new golf courses. To the contrary, people are taking golf courses and they're repositioning them. When this golf course was developed in 1984, there were, there were other golf courses in this area that were developed by the same developer, Carson Perry Scott, and they had the very similar concept. They wanted an office building, they wanted a hotel, and they wanted a golf course. And it was all about that symbiotic relationship, and they were going to create a destination resort. They looked at it, and they said, they, they said that people in Chicago were going to stay in Chicago in order to attend resorts and conferences and, and things like that, and so we needed resort hotels in the area in order to support that type of business demand. That's fundamentally changed. The Marriott focused on that, right? The Marriott's now gone. You heard Stephen talk about desire to make this sort of a living room for Westmont. He wants to focus on the local community. He's got, he's got 50,000 square feet of conference space?
I do.
Yeah?
I could also comment on the profitability.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll have you come up in a second, but 50,000 square feet of conference space. You can't have, you, you can't have a local community support 50,000 square feet of conference space, right? You're, you're looking for the Uniteds, the Boeings, the, the Ty Warrens to come in and hold major conferences at your hotel, and then to golf, and then to stay. The, the, the concept of that has fundamentally changed. If I'm, if I'm attending a conference, I'm attending a conference in Las Vegas, in Florida, in the Cayman Islands, in Arizona. People are, airfare has changed, the way we travel has changed, and it's affected the, the survivability of this concept, which was the hotel-resort conference. And I, I think fundamentally, you've seen a new owner come in seven, eight years ago, and they recognize that, and they've been morphing how the hotel operated. They've gone from focusing on that resort style, to focusing on serving the community, to being your living room, to, to providing Father's Day brunches and Mother's Day brunches, and all of those types of things. Certainly, there's going to be some event space and weddings and all the rest of it, but I, I think there's been a fundamental change, and it's driven by, you know, it's driven not just by a decline in golf. That's certainly a component of it, and we can bring in all kinds of facts and figures to show you how it's declined. And I think Randy spoke to the, the Golf Association suggesting that increases that we've seen recently are probably a blip, and to expect declines on the back end. So, as business owners, we want to be on the front end of that. We want to be able to reposition the asset, recognizing the change. We've looked at it, and we believe that nine holes can provide as much benefit to the hotel, right? Because to us, the hotel is the real critical... Because to us, the hotel is the real critical asset that we're trying to protect. If we can reduce our capital expenditure in the golf course, maintain nine holes, and get the same support to the hotel from nine holes as we could 18, freeing up that, freeing up the money, the capital we have invested in those nine holes is good. Getting the capital infusion for the sale of those nine holes is good, and it relieves the burden. Now we can go and we can continue to reposition and talk about how we continue to change and help the hotel evolve to be the living room for Westmont.
Thank you. Thank you.
I also, I tend to agree with Trustee Van Buren about the unattached, if it would eventually get to that, that point, because I don't, I don't want, I don't think that would fit there in that quarter. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. I appreciate your input. Interesting you finished with that point, because that was probably the primary point that I would make. I, and I think everyone present understands the need of the development for change. You know, it's unfortunate that those three business towers weren't built 40 years ago, but they weren't. And now, since, it's been a property, a business, a little out of kilter. I understand the open space debate and appreciate it. Also that this is private property, and the owner certainly has a right to make changes to his property. I think, as you pointed out, Chris, the comp plan was created in 2013. I don't disagree with you that if we were to have a brand-new one tonight, that there would be a tremendous amount of difference in it. But when you look at the comp plan, and you look specifically at single-family attached and single-family detached, the comp plan says that it encourages single-family attached closer to the tracks, closer to the central business district, as a transitioning types of living space. I appreciate the neighbors' concerns about traffic congestion and possible traffic signals. For me, too, that I think density is, it's not part of tonight's debate as such, but it will be as this project goes forward. And I come back to the attached, detached, as the two commissioners to my right did, and I think I would be prepared to support the change to the concept plan, the conceptual plat of subdivision, but I would rather, much rather, see the word detached there on any housing that would go into that area, as opposed to attached. Tonight, that would be my position. Any other comments from commissioners, staff?
Just want to close the public hearing then, if you haven't.
All right. Public hearing is closed. I think the chair has proposed to, is prepared to accept a motion to approve A, a comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate approximately 52.8 acres from parks slash open space to single-family attached residential.
So moved, Scales.
Second, Thomas.
Motion in second. Discussion questions? Chris, the look on your face, you wanted to say something.
I've already said it.
All right. Seeing none, then roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Van Buren votes no. Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
No.
B, a B3 special development district amendment to remove approximately 52.8 acres from an approved preliminary and final concept plan for a future rezoning request.
So moved, Van Buren.
Second, Clemmons.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Discussion questions on the item? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
And item C, conceptual preliminary plat of subdivision to define said 52.8 acre area. Motion?
Motion, Clemmons?
Second, Scales.
Motion in second. Discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
All right. So, Joe, John, how's that work? We've approved two of the three, how does that move forward? And the majority of the board voted no on A.
John can correct me if I'm incorrect. So I will get with the petitioner tomorrow and find out how they wish to proceed. One option is that they retool and reconsider your negative recommendation and bring that back to you. The other option is they have the opportunity to ask to move forward to the board with the negative recommendation on that one item.
Okay, thank you, understood. And that's clear to everyone, I believe? And so, that closes this item. Thank you for coming, everyone. We still have a couple things to clean up here, you're certainly welcome to stay. And in fact, the next item on the agenda is open forum. So if there's anyone here who would like to address this board on an issue other than these agenda items, now is your chance. Seeing no one, let's move on to miscellaneous items. Under general updates, we have first, a 2022 zoning map, voting district map is on the village board agenda for the 24th of March.
This is just to let planning and zoning know?
But let's just, let's take a 60-second break, so the room can clear.
He's kicking him out.
I just got to go sign autographs. We slide to Commissioner Nico.
Remember voting items, so you can carry on.
Okay. This is just informational, that the zoning map will be going before the board on March 24th. If you remember, we have to have it adopted by March 31st every year. And then once it's adopted, I'll provide new copies to all the commissioners.
I do notice that on the new zoning map to be approved, that that block just west of Ty Warner office building is not, is not green.
Well, and actually, it's green in the comp plan, not green in the zoning.
That's comp plan. Okay.
And the map that's here before you is not the one that's proposed to be adopted?
And so this, this is good through the end of December 2021 for all the changes that were made.
Basically, this was provided tonight at the request of Commissioner Sharp, that we had available to us a current zoning plan and a current comp plan.
And I appreciate that. I'm a visual person. Chairman?
Chairman, I just wanted to clarify, I don't think I quite got, and maybe this is just a benefit for staff, I think, I don't think I quite was succinct with why I voted no in the end, based on my comments. But it came down to detached versus attached.
Yes.
And I am for breaking this part off as a residential development. I just think that given its current adjacencies, detached is most appropriate, in my opinion.
Well, thank you for that. And that was a big part of my internal debate with myself, that I see the B and C as some, as property owners are going to have to do something. And is it for us to say, you know, try to, but if I, if I am going to, now it's time to vote, and if I intend to vote no on A, should I also continue and vote no on everything?
That's just what I did.
Because it, you know, it's certainly more consistent.
Yeah.
And so it was, this one is tricky.
See, and I've seen like, too, with like, with the, you know, I've seen like villas and stuff like that well-done, you know, like in Florida. So that's why I, you know, with me, with voting yes for that reason, because I do like the detached, for sure, but it's just like, if it's done well.
But there are rentals.
Not all are rentals.
Well...
And that would be moving forward with a stipulation of no rentals or something.
Okay, the meeting is still in session, so the final thing on our agenda is just to announce that the next meeting is the second Wednesday in April, that's on the 13th.
And I believe I have three items for that night.
Okay. And I would like to publicly apologize to you, Matt, for teasing you about getting late to the meeting. I knew that your flight was late.
You have to do worse than that.
So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Clemmons.
A motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I have this...